Call the meeting to order. Schedule Laredo regular city council meeting, Council Chambers, 1110 Houston Street, November 3rd, 2025, 5:30 PM. All stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I answer with all my heart and soul to the citizens of Texas. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas pledge.
Honorable members of the Texas Senate, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Homeless silence, please. For Johnny Vandon, former councilman. Thank you, may be seated. Mr. Secretary, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Honorable Mayor Dr. Victor D. Trevino.
Present.
Honorable Councilmember District 1 Gilbert Gonzalez.
Present.
Honorable Councilmember District 2 Ricardo Rangel Jr.
Present.
Honorable Councilmember District 3 Melissa Sigarroa. Honorable Councilmember District 4 Ricardo Rick Garza.
I'm here.
Honorable Councilmember District 5 Ruben Gutierrez Jr.
Present.
Honorable Councilmember District 6 Dr. Tyler King.
Here.
Honorable Mayor Portem and Councilmember District 7 Vanessa Perez. Honorable Councilmember District 8 Alisa Sigarroa.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Mayor, motion for the approval of the minutes of October 20th, 2025.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye. opposed, motion passes. We'll go ahead and proceed with recognitions. We'll start out with recognizing a Laredo tennis team composed of 12 ladies who won the first place in that 3.5 18-and-over division in Surprise, Arizona. The team defeated Mid-Atlantic in the final placing, first among 16 teams. Prior to that, they earned the first place at the sectionals tournament in Dallas, Texas, competing against 14 teams. Their greatest accomplishment is remaining undefeated throughout the entire year. Congratulations to these ladies. And I think we all know that whenever we have people from Laredo that excel in sports or any endeavor, it makes Laredo more proud and a better place to live. So if we could have somebody representing you to give some comments?
Thank you, Mayor, for having us. And thank you, everyone, for being here and supporting us. Well, like they said in our introduction, we're a group of girls making up the 18-and-over team 3.5 level for the organization USTA, which has been a longstanding organization in tennis. So we competed first in Dallas in August, and we came in first place, being undefeated. And then we were able to travel to Arizona to compete national level. And we again came undefeated and won first place. So we don't really remember the last time a team from Texas won Nationals at our level. So we think it's a really, really great accomplishment. And we also, we want to thank the city for adding a lot of new courts and for bringing the tennis game up. So if you haven't played tennis, it's never too late to start. Thank you.
Vamos a pasar de este lado que se puedan pasar.
We'll take the picture and then follow up.
Ahí está, perfecto. Sí. Ready? One, two, and three. Perfect.
Let me go on right here. Ready, one, two, three. Ready, one, two, three. Thank you, we have one more here.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mayor. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job.
Congratulations.
Good job, y'all.
Good job, y'all.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
How are you doing, see you guys?
Good job.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, having a great job.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you so much.
All right. Next recognition to Laredo Boxing Club in recognition of excellence in boxing and distinguished championship achievements. Coaches Francisco Alviso, Angel Molina, and boxers Ramzes Fonseca, Emilio Salinas, Dylan Cortez, Dylan Galván, Thiago Galván. Congratulations. And I know, Coach, you might want to say something?
My name is Coach Alviso. This is Coach Molina. Our other coach could have been here, Coach Reyes, but we run the Laredo Amateur Boxing at 1610 Guadalupe. Our goal there is to keep kids off the streets, give them something positive to do. These are just some examples. There's other kids that, not everybody could box. This is not a sport for everybody. This is just some of the kids that could box. But we also support all the kids to graduate, reinforce good grades. If these kids don't pass, they can't go out and compete because that's just the way, I'd rather them be good citizens than, the sports comes second all the time. But this is just some of our antics that we have here. And like I said, our goal is to keep kids out of the streets and give them something positive to do.
Anybody else want to say something?
Yes, you do.
Draco Palenque, el grupo Palenque está apoyando a todos los jóvenes. A donde viajen, nosotros les brindamos los alimentos. En Dallas, Houston, gracias a la familia Ochoa, Don Pancho Ochoa, está presente. Y adelante. Puro campeón, campeón. This is all a group effort from the community. We also receive a lot of help from Manos Divinas, from Bugbusters. And we're glad, we do this to also represent the city, to show that there's more positive things than negative things coming out of from this city. So this is a community effort. It's not only me, it's not only Coach Angel. It's an effort from the parents, to the sponsors, to everybody, it's just a group effort. So I'd like to thank everybody who's part of this.
Coach, you want to go back there so we can take a picture?
Congratulations.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Good job, everybody.
¿Segura?
Seguro.
Se puede pegar un poquito más para acá? Vamos a voltear para acá todos?
Sorry, sorry, my bad.
One, two, and three.
Okay, right here? Right here with me, ready? One, two, three.
Two more pictures here. One. One, two, and three. One more?
Okay, ready? One, two, three. One more. Give me one minute, sorry. Ready, one, two, three. Perfect. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good job. That's it.
Mayor, just for the record, to recognize colleague Melissa Sigarroa.
Anyone else, any other one? Or no?
That's it, right? You're still...
Okay. That's it.
Mayor, just really quick, I know I have a recognition. I would like to differ for 20 minutes as some UISD bus drivers finished their route and route. So if I can differ for 20 minutes.
All right, we'll be on standby, thank you. I'll proceed.
Not proceed. Recognize.
I'll go ahead and proceed with communications. Can everybody get situated on? Mr. Secretary, for the record, councilwoman Melissa Sigarroa. Present. Thank you. Proceeding with communications. Presentation by Mayor, providing general comments on city manners, upcoming initiatives, and other relevant updates for the council and the public. Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, SNAP. I had a press conference with Congressman Quayle this past Friday, along with the school districts and local food banks, to inform the public about supplemental nutritional assistance programs, better known as SNAP, benefits that were set to expire on Saturday. And more so, the detrimental impact that was have on 66,000 eligible individuals in our community, which the majority are children who use this benefit for their primary source of food. A federal court issued a ruling on Friday afternoon stating that the administration had to fund this benefit. And as of today, the administration has funded SNAP program partially. This food crisis has been compounded by the federal shutdown that is on track to be the longest in history, which will also impact healthcare programs like WIC that only have funding until the end of the month. This is the reason I have issued a declaration of emergency, where I will be initiating the emergency operations center and monitoring the food crisis closely, while at the same time requesting emergency funds from the state of Texas and Governor Abbott to assist with what will eventually become a humanitarian crisis. In line with the court hearing, more action will be taken if the SNAP benefits are not paid by Wednesday, November 5th. In the meantime, I request that the public to continue to donate and give contributions to our local food banks as they're seeing an increasing need as the federal shutdown continues. Now, to talk about the safest city in Texas, I would like to inform the public that the city of Laredo has regained its status as the safest city in Texas and the 13th safest city in the country. This status was achieved with the backdrop that we are a border community and the largest port of entry in the western hemisphere. And this speaks volumes about the Laredo formula and what we're doing correctly. With that being said, I would like to bring up Chief Rodriguez to discuss the specifics of what we have seen and where we have seen major gains in efforts to bring down crime in Laredo. Chief, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council. Well, proud of our department, grateful to our community. It is important that we acknowledge that community is a big part in this. It takes a big part into the safety of this city. But more than anything, I do want to acknowledge that we're not finished yet. We want to be the safest in the country. So with that being said, I know there was a couple of things, a couple of hiccups at the beginning of the year with personnel being taken from us and things like that. And so we had to pivot. And when we're talking about what we're doing, we're leveraging a lot of technology. That's what's going to keep us safe. And I think the modifications that we did with our patrol division speaks volumes as to where we're at now. See, these are numbers from last year, 2024. 2025, I'm proud to say that we're upwards of over 28% on every Part 1, Part 2 offense on a decrease. That means that we're going to be even safer come next year. So that's... So we know that we're still 72 officers short. We understand that it's hard for us to continue hiring personnel, especially during this round. We were able to give about 700 individuals the PDN interest exam. And I'm sorry to say, but we only ended up with 13 to send to the academy. And so this is how hard it is to get into the police department, how hard it's been for us to get individuals to join the Laredo Police Department, right? Because during that process, we know that there is individuals that go either with Border Patrol, CBP, or other agencies, right? So we need to acknowledge that. So with that, we're investing heavily on technology that's going to get us there for years to come, right? And the other thing that we're also investing is investing in our same individuals that we have online right now. The police department is investing heavily on wellness, is investing heavily on mental health, investing heavily on our personnel. So with that being said, Mayor, I can tell you that we're in the right track. And, Council, I can assure you that next year, we're going to be even a lower number. So here we are, committed to what we do best, and that is public safety. And we'll continue to focus and not go sidelines about what we're doing here. We continue to focus on what we do best, and we're committed to coming back next year and being in the same spot next year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor, thank you. Chief Rodriguez, I just want to commend you on the amazing job you've done with the department so far since you've been there. You, your staff, have done a tremendous job. Your training has done wonders, really, with the amount of numbers that we're getting out there to become police officers and what actually gets out to the street. I've seen what the numbers are as far as recruitment, and it's very difficult to do so, as you just mentioned. To the men and women in blue that are out there on the streets, actually making the difference out there, of course, you implemented, but then they have to do it. I want to give them a huge round of applause and huge thanks from all of us sitting up here. And then, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you very much, Chief, for keeping our city safe and being proud of Laredo. Thank you. To continue...
Mayor, I just want to recognize that councilwoman, Mayor from Portem, Vanessa Perez, here.
As noted, thank you. To continue, border wall construction. As part of regular meetings with Border Patrol, we have had several conversations with officials from Border Patrol and homeless security on the current state of border apprehensions, encounters, gotaways, and splash downs. Throughout the meetings, it had been mentioned that while apprehensions are at historic lows, the encounters which involve Mexican drones, gotaways, and high-speed chases continue to be a concern. But however, in today's meeting, the city of Laredo received, for the first time, official notice of the administration plan to build the border wall along the entire southern border as one of President Trump's chief priorities. This includes the area consisting of Laredo, Texas. But before I get into this update, I do want to reiterate that this announcement should not become a partisan issue. This issue impacts our local history, environment, and economy, and quality of life, thus impacting all Laredons. So it is important that we engage these discussions and conversation with the facts as they relate to our specific community. Because irrespective of what's being decided, this will change our community forever. And understanding that political season has already started, I want to caution the temptation of making this a partisan issue or political pandering as we're trying to send a clear and consistent message to both Austin and Washington DC. Anything short of this consistent message runs the risk of sending mis-messengers, and the consequences could be very detrimental and divisive for our community. But as mentioned, during today's meeting, contractors for homeless security discussed the planning, proposed timeline for the border wall construction in our area. This includes border wall designs and technology that will accompany the proposed wall construction. Again, as I mentioned, our city continues to be the safest city in the state of Texas and one of the safest cities in the United States. And we have achieved this without the need of a border wall. This decision is not about the illegal crossings in our area. It is about the president's campaign promises and chief priorities. We will begin into executive session, which will be going in after citizen comments, where we will be discussing. This further was our city attorney to review the proposals. And after that, I will bring up that specific agenda item so that we can have a discussion. So with that being said, I would like to proceed with citizen comments. We'll start out with... Remember, citizens' comments, who also have always brought out this information, they can participate to in-person comments. Citizens wishing to provide in-person comment are required to fill out witness cards and submit to the city secretary no later than 5:45 PM. Identify themselves at the microphone. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Speakers may not pass their minutes to any other speaker. All comments should be relevant to city business and delivered in a professional manner, and no derogatory remark will be permitted. And with that in mind, let's get the first one. It would be Jesse G. Herrera.
Mayor, if I may ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Before, I know some people signed up on a specific item number. If you'd like to ask them if they want to speak before we go into executive session or after we come out? Because there was number 60, number 53 that were mentioned. So I want to make sure that the citizen comments, have you want to be heard now or till after we come out from session?
I think it would be good to ask them now because it might take some time at executive session.
Just wanted to clarify that.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Evans.
Some call me a poet, some call me the dude, but I've always been Jesse Herrera. Anything you might have heard about me is true. Only the men can make change and protect the guilty. Every time I come here, I think this is the last time. Maybe you think so, too. But then, events like the clouds above, sailing like paragraphs, forming smoke signals, because some have to walk the line, toe the potty line, do as are told, or face being blindfolded, gagged, and censored, banished into the wilderness of submission. But there are those who embrace the wilderness, the wildness, who owe allegiance to the truth, not because the Bible or the Constitution says so, not to be famous or to gain attention, but because it is our inner duty to speak up as free men for those who can't or won't. A billion years. Scientists say the universe is expanding faster than expected. Our moon is moving away at 1.5 inches per year. The Adromeda Galaxy will collide with the Milky Way in four billion years, while the American democracy is being vaporized faster than the speed of light, right before our eyes. It's like paving over the Redwood Forest, filling in the Grand Canyon, draining the Potomac River, demolishing the East Wing, building a useless wasteful wall with cute razor-bladed orange buoys from the west coast to the Gulf of Mexico. As millions of Americans suffer in hunger and no healthcare, the gaslighting of America, our democracy, is receding faster than the Rio Grande from its banks. It's a controlled chaos like a perfect storm by Big Brother and OMB. Sure, there'll be collateral damage like hunger or no due process or a few Venezuelans there. Here are a few thousand Palestinians and Ukrainians there. There are a few hundred Mexicans there. Here a few, there a few, everywhere a few few. Like George's pig said, "All animals are equal, but some animals are more equal than others." And after a while, the pigs, who were elected kings covertly and now overtly began undermining the democracy that elected them, like the Outer Limits. "We will control the vertical. We will control the horizontal. We own you." AI with A1 steak sauce, well done. In a land of narcissists, empathy is an oasis because we don't live in a bubble. We aren't a part, we are a part of. And in a billion years, the sun will die, but they're not waiting around for that. Gracias.
Thank you. Amanda El Soler for item number 60.
Good evening to all here. My name is Amanda El Soler.
Sorry? Right in the middle, ma'am.
I thought my voice carried enough. I guess not.
No, no, right in the middle, ma'am. You'll stand right in the middle.
My name is Amanda El Soler. I'm an activist. And Samuel Clemens, better known as Mark Twain, said it best. Ladies and gentlemen, common sense is not common. President Trump is a risk-taker. Like all great businesspeople, they know the word. They know the word negotiator. It simply means give and take. He exemplified this common sense at initiating peace with Israel and Palestine, a deeply unfortunate, complex human situation. Let's see how now and if it sustains. So likewise, I suggest President Trump re-initiate negotiations, give and take, with Mexico, the wall, environment, safety, and economics, for we are the largest land port in the nation. And let's see how and if it sustains, for this is also a deeply human complex issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Charles Martins for item fifty-three.
Yes, sir, item fifty-three. Let me kind of start by saying, you know, people have asked me why I come down here and speak up on these public-type issues. And one thing I kind of want to briefly get into, historically, my uncle got the Republican, got the Ronald, from George W. Bush, the Ronald Reagan Golden Medal for the year. My father was a close friend of Lyndon Johnson's, and my son spent a week on a golf course with Donald Trump. So you really can't get much more political experience than that. Now, with that said, you know, I want to talk about free speech, because that is an item that attracted me to come to the meeting today. I remember when the painting of the streets started, and it ended up kind of being a hate spot. People would peel out at their, on the pro or con, whatever it was, both, literally, you know, put their foot on the brake and their other foot on the gas pedal and do that kind of stuff. Free speech is what you had in your last meeting, where both sides come together and talk in a public forum with you all and express their concerns. But, you know, we just can't go and deface public property. I don't, telling you my family history there was to try to demonstrate, I already know both sides. I know more probably in politics than you all in the presence, and how not things work, but the impact of politics on the United States of America and its citizens. And truthfully, I think the right decision was made regardless of the law and regardless of the funds coming in for infrastructure projects. I think free speech is important. I think there's ways to demonstrate it. I don't really want to go back into why the past administration allowed it. But I'll keep it light. I respect the mayor and the city council for receiving this public input. That is where we exercise our freedom of speech. I don't want to, you know, convolute this with politics, because it's really not about politics. It's really about what's right and wrong and the way to do things to protect the right of speech. And that's why I made the effort today to come down here and speak with you all. I hope you reaffirm your position on the border wall. I think it can be done electronically, but these are the things you all are going to have to discuss. Now, I saw an item to invite Donald Trump down for a golf excursion, adventure, to come to the border and do these kind of things. That's what you need to do. You need, whether you're a Democrat or a Republican, you need to get along with the people that are in charge of our country. I mean, how obvious can that be? Because it is. Regardless of what side you're on, we should all be on the same side. And this division that I saw painted on the streets of Laredo, I was out of town, really upset me. That is not freedom of speech. That is politics. And I'll end by telling you this one. My father taught me never to run far office, you run from office. So I compliment all of you for being here, but I will say one thing about the three I mentioned and their presidents. Not presidents of oil companies, not presidents of anything, presidents of the United States of America. So that's the way you behave, and I think everything kind of generally works in the right direction. But these little ripples in the road, they're just ripples. You've got to keep your eyes on what's key. So I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Rosa Sauceda.
Buenas tardes.
Buenos.
Mayor Treviño, miembro del Cabildo y gerencia de la ciudad. Mi nombre es Rosa Sauceda. Soy residente de la Azteca. Esta es la segunda vez que vengo a hablar frente a ustedes. Vengo para apoyar su oposición al muro fronterizo, y me da mucha alegría que la ciudad tome esta decisión. Como residente de la Azteca, que trabaja en el programa de restauración del parque de Las Palmas, sé que esta decisión es la correcta. Vengo enfrente de ustedes para pedirles algo más que su oposición. Necesito una promesa de ustedes, Mayor Treviño, y del Cabildo, que van a mantener fuerte y fiel a los ciudadanos de esta comunidad en su oposición al muro fronterizo. Nosotros como ciudadanos de esta comunidad merecemos estar informados de todas las fases de su contacto con el gobierno federal relacionado al tema del muro fronterizo. Queremos estar con ustedes en esta batalla para darles apoyo y para mantener participación comunitaria en decisiones que afectan nuestra ciudad. Nosotros estamos aquí para defender a Laredo en contra de este robo de nuestro terreno. Tengo fe en ustedes y estamos aquí a su lado para defender nuestras áreas verdes y el acceso al Río Grande, nuestro más preciado recurso. Laredo fue fundado por su aproximidad y acceso al río. No dejen que nos roben de nuestro patrimonio. Gracias.
Gracias. Valentin Ruiz.
Valentin Valérez Ruiz for the record, veteran taxpayer representing NoOne. I'm here to speak in support of item thirty-five. Thank you, Mayor, for your request and all council members for your support in reaffirming and supporting border security, but not a border wall within our city limits. Being against a border wall is only reasonable not to waste billions of dollars on a historically failed border wall that has never been needed in Laredo, the safest border city in Texas and one of the safest cities in the USA. We need that money to fund our future on projects that bring billions of money in revenue to our border city, like the Riverwalk in San Antonio and now in Monterrey, bringing in millions of dollars to its community. The far-right white nationalist community don't want to see a colored Hispanic black community that is bribing and thriving and self-sustaining. Just look at the history of the USA. A lot of black neighborhoods were burnt down, indigenous communities burnt down. We're a brown community, but we also have a lot of people of mixed colors, communities, races, religions, and we all embrace each other and support each other. They like that idea. That's why they fear us. Do not believe in the false rhetoric that being anti-wall means we are against our president. The fact is, we have conservative values like clean air, food, and water, values like protecting our only natural water source. Just ask professionals like Dr. Tom Vaughn. If a border wall will save the Rio Grande, our only water source, the answer is no. Last week, I was here to stop the erasure of the "defund the wall, fund our future" street mural that served a great purpose. It's naturally fading away, and there's no need to spend over $50,000 to paint over it. The people advocating for a wall do not understand that Noa Laredo, Mexico is our sister city with a shared culture and family traditions. Last week, a fellow advocate, Elsa Hall, suggested for the city to commemorate the "defund the wall" mural. It was supported by Councilwoman Melissa Cigarroa. Sadly, the mayor and all the other council members did not jump in to second her motion. It was a failed opportunity, but it's never too late to commemorate the "defund the wall" mural, which once again highlighted this border city, its people, not only in the USA but around the world. El agua es vida y con ella, si sin ella nada. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia Bruni.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
And greetings to all. My name is Sylvia Bruni. I represent the Webb County Democratic Party, but I want to go back again to what I said, I think, a week or so ago. I represent me, Sylvia Bruni. I've been a Laredoan all my life, and I love this community. Yesterday, I read a letter to the LNT editor written by a former city-elected official, who should have known better, but apparently did not, addressing last November's presidential election and its relation to the wall. In the letter, he claimed, and I quote, "The majority of the American electorate, including Laredonans, voted for the wall when they voted for Trump in this last 2024 presidential election. Anyone who claims that the man in the White House won the majority of the votes either in Webb County or in the country, thus proving that the majority of our community and the nation favor the wall, sadly was either objectively ignorant or deliberately misleading." These are the facts. As of 2024, Webb County claimed a population of 272,822 residents, with 149,000 of them registered to vote, 149,000. Yet in November of 2024, only 65,955 actually voted, 44% of our eligible voters. Of those 65,995 who actually voted, 33,397 voted for Trump. That made 50.61 of the total vote. 32,598, 32,000, voted for Harris and other. That made 49.71% of the total vote. Trump's winning margin in Webb County was .06% of 1%. That was his total. But even more telling is a fact that his actual vote of 33,397 out of the 149,000 eligible voters actually only represented 22.4% of our entire community. That was not a mandate. What we really should be considering, even more important than the deliberate misinterpretation of the vote, is the fact that the threat posed by the wall should not be a political issue. What should drive this discussion in the public sentiment and the realities that drive most of us is that it would be bad for community culturally, fraternally, disastrous for international trade, which we literally lead, disastrous for environment, useless for all intent and purposes. We know that drugs come through the bridges, not the water. What the pro-wall lobbyists represent, plain and simple, are masters of control, of dominance. There is nothing in our vote as of yet in either Laredo, Webb County, or the United States that has voted for the wall. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Elsa Hall.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Elsa Hall, and I would like to encourage you to stand firm with us against the border wall system. Laredo is safe without a wall, as you even had an agenda item promoting how Laredo is the safest city in the state of Texas without a wall. The city needs to be recognized for that, and people need to realize this was achieved without a wall. And don't believe Border Patrol when they say they need a wall. In the last 30 years, the number of Border Patrol agents has tripled, while the crossings now are at historical lows across the entire southwest border. In 1996, the apprehension rate per agent along the southwest border was 281, and this number dropped to 17 in 2012, when the number of agents tripled. This apprehension rate hovered around 20 for nearly a decade and is now at 80 per agent. It is obvious we don't need a wall. There's plenty of agents. Do not let them force that narrative on you. And apprehensions in the Laredo sector have always been the lowest numbers out of all the sectors along the southwest border, and this is without a wall. The feds are planning not only a useless, costly, destructive wall of 30-foot-high steel bollards with 150-foot to 250-foot-wide enforcement zone all along it, all throughout Webb County and Zapata County, the entire sector. But this wall will be accompanied by thousands of buoys that are separated by circular blades, and this is going to be along the entire river, along Webb County into Zapata County into Falcon Lake. These buoys are designed for deep, open waters, not flowing rivers. And I don't know if you've seen the destruction these buoys have caused in Eagle Pass, but they have caused sedimentation and island formation, and they are changing the flow of the river. As an avid kayaker and environmentalist, it pains me to see this devastation to our river and our ecosystem. Also, you need to consider how this will impact our drinking water intakes. Not only will this wall cut us off from our river, destroy our parks and our homes, but the increased sedimentation from these buoys will damage intake pumps and cause changes to the water quality that will negatively impact our water treatment plants and our drinking water. Other nearby communities look to the city of Laredo to set the example. So I'm here today to ask you to stand firm against the border wall system and stand with us again to fight for our river, our homes, our community, and strive to bring equality to the borderlands and our people. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. We have Ignacio Nohosa for comment.
You're going to wait until sixteen? No, no, no.
Okay, it's up to you. Do you want to come up, or do you want to wait?
I'll wait.
All right, go wait. Okay, thank you. All right. Want to go to the second session? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to bring up my recognition. I want to thank the public for waiting and my colleagues and the mayor. Recognizing the United Independent School District bus drivers for their exceptional dedication and service. They have gone above and beyond taking on extra routes and hours while always prioritizing the safety of our students. Mayor and colleagues, this group of people, as I just read an item, have taken their job with pride, ensuring the safety of the public and students, and doing this every day. So as an appreciative, I would like to say thank you and congratulations for all the hard work you do every year, every day, and throughout the year. I would like to read out their names, as it's so important to me. Mr. José Aranda, Leonardo Rodriguez, Raquel Garza, Alicia González, Sylvia Madrid, Nancy García, Cynthia Rios, Ricardo Sánchez, Elida Orozco, Olga Treviño, Ms. Rosa Dávila, Beatriz Menchaca, Diamantina Montoya, and Fabiola Viera. And especially want to thank the directors of the southeast and west compound, which is so important, Mr. Treviño, Rangel, and Hernández. Also, going, a big thank you to Ms. Janie Gómez Berlanga. I know, you know, she's a strong advocate for these drivers, and she was heartbroken last year because she wanted you all to be recognized during you all were short-staffed and going over and beyond for the students. But as I spoke to the mayor, he promised me that we would make it happen in UYSD administration as well. So today's your big day to my colleagues, the public, and the public watching. the public watching on, on TV, we thank you on behalf of all for putting, prioritizing our, our children and our students. Thank you all so, so much. We know half of you aren't here because they're still dealing with the routes at this evening. Now, go ahead.
Alicia Gonzalez? Sylvia Madrid? Nancy Garcia? Cynthia Rios? Ricardo Sanchez? Elida Orozco? Olga Trevino? Rosa Dávila? Beatriz Manchaca? Diamantina Montoya? Fabiola Viera?
Are any of the directors here today? Great. You're, oh, Mr. Trevino, right?
Yes, sir.
You're with the North Transportation Compound. Mayor, we would like to read the plaque presented.
The city of Laredo Mayor and City Council recognize the United Independent School District North Transportation Compound for their exceptional dedication and service. They have gone above and beyond taking on extra routes while always prioritizing the safety of our students. Congratulations.
For our drivers, I just want to thank them, you know, as always. Uh, we appreciate them getting to our office at 5:00 a.m. They don't leave till, most of them don't leave. A lot of them are not here today because they don't, they don't actually leave till 10 o'clock at nighttime. So I appreciate all their hard work. As I always told them, uh, what better way to start your day than transporting tomorrow's future? And tomorrow's future may be the kids sitting up here representing us in the city, uh, our safest city. And so I appreciate everything that you all do for us. Thank you very much.
Sure, yes. One, uh, somebody, one, one more speaker.
Yes, I just want to say on behalf of all United School Bus Drivers, we want to thank, thank you for all this recognition. Uh, we take pride in our serving our students every day with safety, care, and dedication. Thank you to the parents for, uh, for trusting us with such an important responsibility. Thank you very much. Thank you everybody.
Right here. Ready? One, two, three. One more? Two more. Ready? One, two, three.
Great. Congratulations. Thank you, guys. All right, at this point, we'll make a motion to go to executive session.
Second.
Motion second.
Mayor, with that second.
Yes, go.
Well, it's, it's gonna be an executive session, uh, number 55. Bring it, bring it back so we can speak on back, on the back.
The Metro Transit?
Yeah.
On that one as well.
Mayor, then also.
Did I make, uh, I believe the items for executive session will be items 51, 53, 55, and on the supplemental agenda, number two.
I'll second that motion.
Motion second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Executive session. We're gonna go with that. Ready? Back to executive session. It is 9:11 p.m. No agreement were made. I'd like to proceed with, uh, number 52 on the, that's regular? Think it's a, a regular agenda.
Regular agenda.
Regular agenda.
Mayor, did you already motion to bring up all of your, those items, or just?
No. It's 52, 53 on the regular agenda, and three on the supplement.
And six, sixty, if you will?
Yeah, sixty.
Just to bring them together.
Motion as amended. On favor?
Not to discuss together, to discuss separately, right?
Separately.
To bring them up separately.
Okay. Under, uh, General Counsel, Discussions and Presentation, number 52. Discussion with possible action on having a bipartisan delegation and/or hosting an international summit to our border, riverfront, and any matters related thereto. That is my motion.
A vote second?
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Number 53. Discussion with possible action on the city of Laredo reaffirming its position on supporting border security, not in support of a border wall with, within residential areas and/or city limits and any matter related to.
I'll second that, Mayor, if you're making a motion.
Second. Uh, before, before we go, uh, then finish the motion. And the motion is send it to the public also for a poll. That is the motion.
As an additional item?
That's, yeah, sorry. Second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. And now on the supplemental agenda, number three, General Counsel Discussion and Presentation. Discussion with possible, possible action on current city policies regarding high-speed chases related to illegal crossings and update on collaboration with federal agencies and any matters related thereto. Police Chief, uh, Rodriguez, come in.
Good evening, Mayor.
Evening.
Good evening, Council. Do you, do you want us to?
Yes, the update on, uh, the high-speed chases and the legal crossings.
Absolutely. So.
And the policies.
Mayor, so, so I, I know that some, some people confuse our policy as a no-chase policy, which is, that's not what it is. Our, our, our policy is a restrictive policy as to when we can chase and when we cannot. And so pretty much is the assessment of the officer as to when he deems the chase, the chase are dangerous. And that's when we, we, we decide and we make the decision. And usually it is the sergeant or the watch commander that makes that decision. Now, when it comes to immigration, we got, we got, we have a lot of things to take into consideration, right? So once, you know, whether it's DPS or Border Patrol that engages in the chase, usually those chases, you know, it's about maybe six, seven vehicles chasing that one vehicle. And for us, the right thing to do is to make sure that we create that safe perimeter. That's where the chase is going to, whether it's on a, on a, going towards the bridge, going towards the, the river, or just going within the city, right? And we, which, we just want to make sure that there's the perimeter of that chase is, is made safe. If we engage in that chase as well, that's gonna make us eight vehicles involved, right? Now, one thing that I will share with you, Mayor and Council, is that every time there's a chase and there's a crash, the ones that take those crashes is Laredo P D. And so the resources are being exhausted just by taking those crashes, whether it's one crash to sometimes three crashes within that same, uh, chase. And so we gotta remember that the agencies that are involved in these chases sometimes, whether it's DPS, Border Patrol, even the constable's office, those agencies do not have to go back and answer the calls for services that the Laredo P D has, right? So that's why we also need to be cautious as to when we're engaging in those, in those chases, whether it's one police unit, two police units. We don't want six or seven police units engaging those charges, chases because of the fact that we need to remember our, our main objective, which is call for service. So, once we assess the situation, now, it changes, Mayor and Council. Whenever there is a chase involving immigration and there is a threat to the law enforcement or a bigger threat to the public, we completely, we are gonna engage 100% anytime that comes our way. So I just want to make sure that we're, we're clear on the policy, Mayor, that it is not a no-chase policy. It's a restrictive policy. And we're always assessing the situation because we're putting the, the, our, our community's safety first rather than the individual that's going 100, sometimes 110 miles per hour within intersections.
Yes, go ahead.
Chief, quick question. Where does this, most of your chases, have you seen late, not lately, but most of the chases, where do they start off from?
West Laredo and Main Street.
West Laredo, Main Street, but it used to be?
South Laredo.
And they start off where?
Usually by the Main Street area. It travels all the way to West Laredo, heading towards the bridge. Sometimes it just ends in, in central Laredo right now. That's what creates the problem once it comes into the city.
So it changed what, the past year?
It changed, I want to say, the latter part of 2024.
And being the reason what?
Uh, there was, uh, several groups that were dismantled in South Laredo that were, that that was their main objective, to, to do those, those, those crossings and, and, uh, have that, that pathway to, to those, uh, illegal immigrants that they were picking up at the, at the border.
No, it's a discussion.
No, it's a discussion. All right.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Mayor, may I?
Go ahead.
Chief Rodriguez, I just want to thank you for really putting public safety at the forefront. Um, we've heard in other communities where some of these high-speed chases occur, it doesn't seem as if all agencies are taking that into consideration. But the fact that you're willing to put that at the forefront and make sure that our communities are safe, and also all the additional collaboration that you do to make sure that that criminal element is also controlled, it's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. You excited?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. Item 60. So, um, obviously, uh, you know, this item got a lot of attention, uh, over the weekend. Uh, but the, the point of the item, um, is to, because DHS is getting very serious about looking at, um, the border. Uh, on October 10th, they released 10, um, $4.5 billion of contracts for, uh, smart, smart wall, uh, contracts in El Paso, Tucson, and other places. And then they, October 20th, they released their, uh, sm, smart wall map, um, where you can see the designs of, uh, border barrier and wall all across the U.S.-Mexico border. Uh, and if you look, um, in Laredo, you can see from Columbia Bridge all the way to South Laredo, there's plans for, um, for border barrier and buoys. And, uh, as this council just motioned, um, to pass a resolution that were for border security, um, but not for, uh, border barrier, um, in city limits and residential communities, um, we have very limited options as a city. When, when you have a federal government with $46 billion that was passed in the one big beautiful bill act in July of this year, that's $46 billion that the federal government has. And then they legally, they have eminent domain where they can come in and take, um, uh, our property. Um, so at the end of the day, our legal options are limited. Uh, and so it, it became, in my mind, it became a, um, a political str, and a personal thought of a strategy. And I appreciate Councilmember Gutierrez and Councilmember Alyssa Segueroa for cosponsoring this idea of inviting the president to Laredo. We know he likes golf, the idea being that we have the number ninth ranked municipal golf course in the state of Texas that happens to be located on the Rio Grande River. Because if you look at the map right now, the, uh, the wall would go through the Max Men Del Golf Course, uh, requiring us to potentially relocate two holes and just unnecessarily. Um, and then you, and it goes all the way down through the city of Laredo. This, this community has long been, uh, one united community. Um, so, and not to mention, we're seeing some of the lowest crossings, um, in history. And we feel that, I think, I think the council feels that this, um, money could be used to attack, um, you know, the crossings that are happening along, uh, the, or bridges. That's where most of the drugs and, uh, human trafficking comes through. Uh, more technology for our, for, for X-ray and technology surveillance and whatnot. Um, so, you know, the idea would be to invite him. Now, of course, he would have to accept. And the word invitation, I've learned, uh, has a little bit more of a polite, um, implication than, than one would think. It somehow means you agree with everything that the person does. The, for me, it's just, we cannot order him to come. We, we can request that he come. Uh, I, I think, uh, he was here in 2016 when his first presidential, uh, campaign. It would be good for him to come and see that Laredo is very different. Laredo is a unique community compared to other parts of the border, where we live right, we have people that live right up against it, uh, whereas a lot of other places, like in the valley, there's, uh, quite a bit of space in between, um, a couple miles. So it's just very different. And, um, so that, the, the motion is, in addition to having him come down, of course, and the media chose to, uh, report it as King wants to invite Trump for golf, okay? And forgot to leave out the second part of it, uh, to, to discuss a border barrier and the implications and why we may not want that in our community. Um, so, um, you know, so I just want to be clear that that's the, that's the reason, the intentions, uh, behind it. And, and to bring him to World Trade Bridge, uh, potentially downtown Laredo, see that we want to revitalize our downtown. We have millions of dollars trying to be, uh, pumped into our downtown and see that, um, there's better ways in the year of 2025 to, uh, protect, uh, our, our border, especially, specifically in the city of Laredo as a unique, um, uh, sector. Uh, so that's the motion and that's the rationale.
I'll second for discussion. All right. I'd like to also chime in on what you said. I think, uh, that intention is very good and the idea is good. But we have to realize that the governor has a lot of interest in, in our border, uh, in the major port of entry in the United States. I think, uh, it would be more pertinent or more appropriate to check it out with the governor. And if this council will entertain, or somebody from this council entertain inviting him, I think that's also, it has to be the head of the local government. It can't be somebody from council, because that would be breaching protocol. But the idea, what you brought in, I think it's important. I think that they need to know what's going on here. But if we're going to do something like that, it has to be done in the proper way. We need to check with the governor, let him know at least what our intentions are. And if we're going to invite him, it has to be the head of the local government.
As amended.
That would be my amendment.
Mayor? May I?
Yes, go ahead.
So I, 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 I have some thoughts. I think, um, first we should make something clear. You know, Councilmember King referred to this as a Hail Mary, but, uh, you know, as my husband pointed out, a Hail Mary play is usually made from players on the same team. So I, I don't think it's the same. I think what the invitation ignores, as much as we are trying to navigate our way through this very carefully, is what the ICE immigration raids have shown us in Chicago, in DC, in Boston, in Los Angeles, is that, um, there's a real difference between what this president promised, which was an ejection of, quote, rapists, murderers, drug dealers, end quote, and what we see daily in front of our own eyes, which is the detention of longtime residents who are working, who are waiting in line to pick up their children from school, who are at the courthouse or immigration offices to continue the red tape of correcting their immigration statuses through a legal process, who are refugees from. their immigration statuses through a legal process, who are refugees from wars or natural disasters, who are, who five minutes prior to ICE coming to arrest them were under protected legal status, but because of an executive order, have had that status yanked out from under them with zero consideration on the impacts to their family and well-being and with zero grace to plan for their new reality. Unless we take comfort in our own citizenship, understand that plenty of people have been taken into custody regardless of their citizenship status. There have been over 170 detention detentions of citizens and others who are here legally. The excuse for these detentions has run the gamut from an irritation of protesters to looking like an undocumented Mexican. This weak and feckless Supreme Court is allowing ICE to pick up people based on how they look, according to Justice Brett Kavanaugh. This is grossly insulting to everything we understand about equal protection under the law. This temporary shadow docket decision will be revisited, but until then, our Supreme Court is allowing for this un-American unraveling of our constitutional rights. And I bring up ICE because an invitation to have this administration come to our community will not only bring the head of state, but it will put us in that spotlight for all of the enforcement actions that are occurring across our country. This is the new world we find ourselves in, thanks to the immigration enforcement actions by this administration. It is a choice and one that this president repeatedly announces every time he is questioned about it. We in Laredo are proudly, uh, are proudly a majority-minority city. We are 95% Hispanic. We host many legal residents who live in our city. We host many day visitors who cross our international bridges, some who work here, some who do business here, some who shop here, and all who contribute to our growing economy. So let's pretend that this is a serious attempt to address this border wall issue. I believe it's ill-advised and and not serious because it it's isolating this one issue and pretending like the rest of the other actions that are occurring right now are not occurring, that we can isolate them somehow. But what would we do with additional ICE enforcement actions? Currently, our ICE officers work, as they have been our local officers, with an understanding of the many immigration statuses that people hold here. We trust our local officials who understand their community. The newly-commissioned enforcement division, whether it is ICE or their much less trained, newly-assigned Border Patrol officers, again, I do not want to mix our local Border Patrol, who have a deep understanding of community, but they have shown a complete, these newly-trained trained officers have shown a complete disrespect for constitutional protections and for human decency. In Chicago, according to Reuters, quote, "immigration a- agents have tear gassed at least five neighborhoods in the past month," according to a Reuters tally, "crashed the car into another vehicle at least once, arrested protesters, trailing immigration agents, used tasers on people during violent arrests, pointed guns at people, and shot two people, including one fatally. They body slammed a mother, separating her from a child, and terrorized children participating in a Halloween parade with tear gas." Why would we vote to allow this into our community? Who will invite this kind of terror to be perpetrated on our residents? And who will pay for this? Mr. Trump's trips rack up significant costs for local communities. Earlier this year, Ton Borlan, an assistant Palm Beach County administrator who's currently serving as interim county administration, said security during the president's time in the area can cost up to $200,000 to $300,000 a day, depending on his activities. Local law enforcement is expected to absorb these costs for any president. So we would have to budget $200,000 to $300,000 to host this. In my opinion, it's hard to separate the ego of this president from his actions he does, his administration engages in. We will ask for hundreds of thousands of dollars in security costs and bring real fear to our community. So I cannot agree to vote for this request.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, okay, on this issue, I just want to let the public know that we're not inviting President Trump for leisure. Anybody that plays golf here knows that business is done on a golf course, drinking a beer, maybe two. Anybody that plays golf knows that. Business is done on a golf course. This gentleman, our president, plays golf. He loves the sport. We need to work at it. We need him to come here to see how beautiful the Max Golf Course is, so he doesn't build this wall here. If we can get him here, hook him to get here, I'm hoping myself, the mayor, whoever's going to be there, can convince him of that. It's not about playing golf, it's about getting the president of the United States here in Laredo, to get him to see how beautiful our city is, how beautiful this golf course is, so we can hopefully get him to not build that wall that we don't want. We simply don't want a wall here. We simply don't need it. We don't want to see us divided with our partner in Mexico. That's the whole reason behind this. As far as the money that's being spent, we spent $200,000, $300,000 on a parade, but we can't spend that to have a president here? The president of the US that we're fighting against a wall for, and we can't spend $200,000, $300,000 for him to be here? A lot of you all don't want the wall. A lot of you all do want the wall. And we're split. Laredo is split. But to spend $200,000, $300,000 on security, to have our president here, and maybe, maybe not get a wall built here, is certainly worth it, as far as I'm concerned. So I applaud you for bringing this item. I know we got some heat forward, because I got several calls as well, but I think it's worth the try to get that man, because he's the only one making the decision. We can speak to everybody else under him, but he's the only one making the decision to get that wall built here. And if we can convince him not to build it, then we're doing something good. Thank you. Mayor, go ahead.
Um, thank you, um, Mr. Gutierrez. I appreciate that, because you're, it's it's quite the sentiment that I have also. Yeah, it there's a lot of back and forth, uh, on on this issue of, of, the 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 invitation is that not only serves as to bring him over here, I think, I I seriously think that, um, as president, he doesn't get to hear a lot of the things that are going down at the ground level. A lot of the, a lot of the stuff that's going down here in Laredo, Texas, I doubt that he hears up there. So, um, whether this invitation works or not, I think it serves a purpose, because if he does come down here, it'll certainly put the eyes of the world down here. And we can certainly not only talk about the wall, we can only, we can talk about everything and how this is affecting us. It, this isn't a red or blue, uh, conversation. This is something saying, hey, look, what your decision that you make, this is the way it's affecting us down here. Our people are suffering because of this. This is what you can do good? I was telling them earlier, this is 2025. Really? This is the only way we can protect our border with a with a wall? We don't have anything else that we can use. But if he doesn't hear those type of conversations, like, again, I doubt that this trickles up there to the White House and he gets to hear all of these conversations about for or against, or or how it's affecting our our personal, our our citizenry here. It really is. The eminent domain is coming in, people's properties are being taken away, and people are being left, you know, without anything, with no, with no, with this, without any regard for for human decency or empathy or anything like that. That's what's going to happen. So we need to, we need to really embrace this. I'm not representing the red or the blue on this issue. I am saying merely saying, we need to talk to the head dog, and we need to talk to them because it's affecting us down here. So this invitation, I think, is a good idea. Uh, Mayor, I'll 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 second your amended motion to to, uh, bring the the governor here, but somebody needs to talk to them. I don't think they're get, they're hearing, they're hearing, they're, they're, I don't think they're getting the right story up there. I really think they need to see it at the ground level and figure out how they're affecting us down here. And 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 I think that, you know, speak to their better angels and see if that works. Because I'm surely not going to sit here and let them do whatever they're going to do and not act upon any and just do nothing. So I I anything and everything the public can can break forward on how to get these, all this attention to DC, please let us know. Because it's it's very frustrating to sit up here and not have any very limited, and I'm talking about really limited legal capabilities to try and stop something that we know is going to affect us. So I I think this opens up the conversation for a lot of those things, and like I said, this is, this is not a political issue for me. This is something that would needs to get done, because it's happening to our city, a city that I love, that I really think that it's not being, you know, it's being disrespected and not being taken into consideration when they're doing this type of things. So, uh, Mayor, I'll 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 second your motion to to invite the governor, and hopefully, uh, they can hear us loud and clear up there. Right? So can you repeat the motion as amended?
The the amendment was, uh, to invite the president through the governor's office and the motion that, uh, the motion that I've made, uh, by Dr. King, discussion of possible action to have the city formally invite, uh, President Donald J. Trump to Laredo, uh, for, uh, for golf at the Max Mandel, uh, municipal, uh, uh, golf course.
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
If I may, Mayor. Um, I I I appreciate what is trying to be done here, and and of course, I don't think we should, I think we should have open arms to everybody who is willing to to come into our city, and and that that for me is not the issue. Uh, golf, I I can appreciate that a lot of people play it, I personally don't. So I just would like to, if we're going to have a conversation, a real serious conversation about what's going on here, I'm not sure that the golf course is the best place for the ser- severity of the conversation that we need to have. Um, I I don't know, you know, I, of course, the invitation is 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 attractive in that sense, that, you know, appeals to him, but I would prefer, uh, a sit-down and have a serious discussion on the the situation at hand and the, in terms that we are here to protect pre- um, public property. And the real issue at hand is that, um, whether you agree with a wall or not, it's going to involve them taking city property, which belongs to our local taxpayers, away. Uh, it's not an, we're not talking about an easement anymore. Before, we were having conversations about easements, which would allow them to build one on our property. Uh, that's no longer on the table. Now it's about, they will acquire property that belongs to the citizens of Laredo. And in that regard, I do think it's worth, um, you know, figuring out a way that 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 we can retain that property, right? And see what kind of deal we can work out and and negotiate and have conversations. I'm just not convinced that the golf course is the best place to conduct that type of business. Um, and Mayor, I noticed that you had an agenda item that talked about a delegation. I don't know if we brought that up, but I was a lot more, um, interested in your, in your delegation idea, because I don't think it's just Trump meeting with us as council. I do think it's going to be President Trump meeting with the governor, um, elected officials, uh, stakeholders, and and this is a bigger, a bigger conversation that needs to be had and 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 an understanding that needs to be reached, and it's going to be, um, a a lot more work than just, I think, around the golf.
All right, I'm sorry. Uh, go ahead, I'm sorry. Can can we, well, can we vote on this as part of that? I mean, the initial, uh, then, uh, agenda item was to bring him to a golf course. It starts there, but I agree with you that it can head on to the delegation part and have a sit-down with that. But I think the idea is to showcase, you know, the the probable damage that it's going to cause to the environment, and it it starts in a place where he's comfortable at. Uh, and and, uh, it 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 might sound a little bit, uh, uh, you know, I'd say corny for a lack of better word, but, you know, I think it starts there at the course and and, you know, have that conversation out in the open, and then we we can turn the other agenda item together with this one and build a delegation off of it. That's certainly good. Obviously, you don't want him, you know, to to spend the whole day out there.
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
Can I make a motion to actually bring your agenda item up, so we can have?
It's already passed.
Oh, there it is. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
All right. And one more thing before we proceed that. If we're going to invite him here to Laredo, it would have to be the head of the local government.
Yes.
It can't be a council member, regrettably. I mean, your intentions are great, but it has to be.
Yes, and Mayor, I apologize, like, um, you know, I definitely, I know some of the media put it that I invited, that's obviously not true. I just put it on the agenda for us to consider inviting as a body, and I, I hope that the invitation would come from you, Mayor.
All right.
Yeah, and and through the governor's office and, um, and Congressman Quayle has re- reached out to say he's willing to also, uh, help with his White House contacts. I know there's people who've talked about going through Senator Cruz and Cornyn as well. I think, you know, the, however the invitation ultimately gets there, uh, you know, the point is that it's there. And of course, anytime a president comes to any state, the governor always, uh, meets them there and is is a part of that. And, um, so I think, you know, uh, I I hope it was implied that we should also include other, and maybe combine your item, uh, you know, so that everyone is included. I guess, at the end of the day, my my point, and I think Councilmember Gutierrez put on this, is, um, it it, the money, the $46 billion that was passed in July of this year in the One Big Beautiful Bill Act, um, it's there, it's in the executive's checking account, and they can use it, um, however they like, and they have the legal eminent domain. So the idea is that, uh, we we kind of missed the vote on a bipartisan delegation in the sen- in the sense that, um, they already passed the law and, you know, we're, um, you know, unfortunately, it's just, it's a really difficult situation for us. But I, I do agree, we should definitely have, um, you know, a governor here, the the invite should come through, uh, yourself as mayor and and through the appropriate congressional delegation offices to get to the White House, um, you know. And of course, he probably gets hundreds of invitations, but hopefully, this one can um, a- attract the attention to be able to make it actually happen, and we can use our our local stakeholders that do have that direct phone line of communication with with people in the White House to to help us actually make this happen and hopefully be able to prevent, uh, something that I think this council, uh, will, as it just voted on, doesn't want for the community.
All right, I think that's, uh, that clears it up a little bit. The thing is that, uh, we need not to have the governor invite him, because he'll get, he's going to the governor, not to us. So it has to be coming from us. And if we if we word it in that fashion, then we, yes, we can use, uh, dignitaries from the state and representatives, that'll help us, but the idea, the focus is for him to come here to to visit.
Through the mayor and council.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, we have a second?
And a second.
And a second. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Please mark this opposed.
Yeah, opposed. Next item? Where are we?
Mayor, can we, uh, I'm sorry, can we move up item number 57, please?
57 on the regular agenda.
Yeah.
Second, motion second, all in favor?
Action.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Uh, this item is is discussion of possible action, and and first of all, I'm going to read it as is, but I'd like to amend the the agenda item to read, uh, to change the wording on it, to remove some wording and not the other. It says, "Discussion of possible action to direct the city manager to enter into discussion with Leche organization regarding the potential development of Via Cio Connector and related matters and any matters or in matter incident thereto." I want to remove the words Via Cio Connector and include the word Elote, uh, which is, I'm sorry, which translates into the eastern... It translates into East Laredo optimized transportation expansion connector road, and and any related matters and any matters incident thereto. Uh, I met with some gentlemen that are interested in this project. I believe this project has some merit to it. Uh, I believe it's, uh, it's right now, as is, uh, I'm going through through the process and protocols of what we do up here. The idea has been, uh, I've spoken to them about it, now I want to open the door to discussion for these gentlemen to speak to our our administration, so that they can discuss further, and then I would ask that the administration bring it back to us once those discussions are had, and, uh, and and give us a staff report and recommendations.
I will second that motion, Mayor.
Motion second?
Mayor, may I?
Go ahead.
Um, I think, Mr. Win, the, um, East Laredo optimized transportation something, right? The 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 reason why there's a bit of confusion with the Via Cio Connector Road is that in the future, you can see where Via Cio would actually connect to it, but right now it's named the Elote Project.
Correct.
Maybe that's for the public to know.
No, no, but thank you, no, thank you for explaining on that.
And and I just want to thank, um, Councilmember Garcia for bringing this up. I also have been approached by this by this group, and it's an interesting way to fund, um, a road that could turn into a primary arterial that would also relieve pressure from... from Highway three fifty-nine that has an only an access or escape route actually from Highway three fifty-nine at all the way in at Concord Hills Boulevard, means that any neighborhood east of Concord Hills Boulevard, if Highway three fifty-nine is shut down because of some type of accident or tractor trailer knives, um, which has happened before, then you have, uh, residents who cannot get in or out of that area, so this is a pressure point in our city, we need more connectivity and mobility, and I think the, um, the ability to move forward in a discussion, because there will be significant challenges there, it's not, um, the easiest road to create, there there are some challenges that need to be addressed, but if we look to future planning, we know that population is already developing and growing on Highway three fifty-nine, we know that a connector to Highway fifty-nine and and Councilmember Garcia's district would allow for a lot more growth and development. And so if we can get in early on planning it so we can maximize the potential benefit to our city, I I completely agree, that's the way to go. So it's an early stage, this by no mean encumbers the city to, um, financially support this project, but it is a great place to begin a conversation and see what makes the best sense to move towards connectivity and mobility. Thank you.
Okay, so does anybody else want to make a comment about this? I just want to make sure that, um, you know, we just want to look at the MPO plans, we want to look at the long-term thoroughfare plans, we want to look at the outer loop plans, all the alignment, want to make sure that the property owners are all on board, that are gonna be affected by this, and and have all of those check box, check marks checked off, um, before we as a city commit monies towards towards this.
Mayor Portem.
That's part of the 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 motion, right?
I will just add that those discussions are being had in essentially those points that you are addressing, they're already in discussion with the MPO and with the RMA, so, um, it's it's good that you're bringing up that these challenges need to be met, and yes, they will be addressed in these discussions.
Well, I just want to clarify that I'm bringing it up not not for good points, but because that's protocol and most of our infrastructure comes through the MPO, so we wouldn't want to circumvent that or go around it and do something at the local level without making sure that we have all those things in 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 a row. So, the motion's on the table, does anybody else want to make a comment? We have a motion, the second, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor Portem, motion to approve appointments to commissions, boards, and committees, four and five.
We have a motion and we have a second, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Yeah, motion to approve a public hearing, interdiction ordinance, six and seven.
Motion, we have a second? I'll second that.
Mayor, uh, Mayor Portem?
Yes.
I do have a question on number seven, it's just a question.
Okay, let's, we're gonna pass. We're reading six and seven, and then we'll take the question, thank you.
Number six, public hearing, interdiction ordinance, Laredo Texas authorized city manager to accept and enter into a contract with Texas A&amp;M National University for the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board Minority Health Research and Education Grant Program, amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget by incorporating revenues and expenditures in the amount of hundred sixty-two thousand two hundred twenty-one, with no match for the city of Laredo Public Health Department, amend fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six full-time employment position, this is like greeting one, licensed professional counselor, two-year position for the term of August first, twenty twenty-five through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven, funds will be accounted for in the Laredo Public Health Department Fund, Texas Higher Education Coordinating Boards Minority Research and Education Grant. Number seven, ordinance of Laredo, Texas amending chapter six, animal and foul article one in general, article two, rabies control, and article seven, application, registration, permits fee, tier revised regulations related to vaccination, registration, and fees provided for severability, provided for a penalty, provided for publication and effective date. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so let's take it one at a time. Item six, um, does anybody want to speak on that item? Mr. Chavez? No? Okay, so, motion.
Motion to approve the introduce.
Second, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Item seven, Councilmember Seattle?
Yes, I was hoping, um, you know, there there is a, um, item seven, which is amending the chapter six of animal and foul, and it discusses our regulations concerning am- animal care services, I was hoping that Ms. Bluestone could clarify to the public what is expected of them when they encounter strays in the street. I get this question a lot, and I think some of my colleagues do too, about some burden being placed on uh, residents if they choose to care for a stray outside of their home. They do believe they're being good Samaritans, are regulations sound a little, um, well, I would just like some clarity about what their obligation is, how much it encumbers them for, uh, potential fines is what it sounds like, so if there, if we could have some clarity about that, and any other, um, uh, recommendations that you can give to people who encounter strays on their property or in their neighborhood.
Um, for the record, Lauren Bluestone, Animal Services, um, just to have a little clarity, I think, one of the biggest, um, items right now is that there is an ordinance that is for nuisance feeding. So, and I will break that down in terms of, um, it is, it is a an ordinance that obviously was passed by the city. It does protect property owners that might not want animals around, as we know, feeding definitely attracts animals to, you know, whatever source, uh, food source. With that said, that is not something that Animal Services act, like actively monitors. If we are complaint driven by that, we don't go out searching for individuals who are actively feeding. This comes into play when it becomes a nuisance for the neighborhood, the neighbor surrounding, or anybody else that would perceive it as an actual nu- nuisance, that's when our officers respond. Nine times out of ten, when it does come to somebody feeding animals out there, and again, our stance, because we do have a a community cat program, is certainly not to stop that, right? But we want to make sure that everybody in the community is also happy with the results of that, because, yeah, I mean, if you look at the stray population, they are getting food from from somewhere, a lot of them are chunky out there. Um, so, obviously, there's a lot of, whi- which is is not a bad thing, right? I mean, we do have a very healthy stray population for the most part, and that is contributed to, um, you know, a lot of the citizens within the city. And our standpoint is while we appreciate that, we know that that is not the mentality for every single citizen in the city. Citizens do have the right, under the nuisance feeding, to bring that forth, um, and and have that addressed. Our officers do go out, a lot of the times in the beginning, it's more of an instruction in terms of, how can we feed animals maybe on a schedule? So that they only come out at certain times of the day. How do we feed on a schedule so that it doesn't attract other items like wildlife? There's a lot of other, where do we feed these on our property so it doesn't necessarily, um, bother your neighbors? We also will talk to the neighbors in terms of, you can use deterrents that won't just, you know, rid of, uh, stray cats or stray dogs, but it could possibly even rid of some of the wildlife that might be a nuisance as well. So the first step is definitely education when we get to this process, um, pending that there's no, uh, obvious public health or or public safety risk. Um, but that's kind of how we address the nuisance ordinance as it is stated in i- in the city ordinances. That's the clarity that I can give, because I do know that there are two sides, we have people who absolutely adore animals and want to feed them, and we have opposing sides where, no, I really, really don't. This kind of beats it in the middle in terms of, let's work together to make both sides happy, and that's kind of our stance on the ordinance right now, but it's not that we actively go out and look for people who are nuisance feeding. Have we charged people before? Yes, we have.
Well, I I think that's where it comes into play, no, when, um, the resident calls Laredo Animal Control, Animal Care, and they find out, instead of, um, having some resources, how can I continue to feed this animal, instead, they're told, if you continue to feed the animal in seventy-two, for seventy-two hours, you either own it or you can get fined. And it's, it's as if they're being slapped in the face for what they think they're doing, it's a good thing. However, I appreciate the fact that you're bringing up that this does not apply to all of our residents, and that there is a logical reason why you either want to control the feeding schedule, or perhaps you don't want to feed strays, and you want to make sure that you can contact LA CS to see if they can get picked up, because those animals, if they continue to be fed there, will continue to contribute to that nuisance, that I don't think is often understood by everyone, and I think it's fair to to point that out. I also do appreciate that you are focused on education, because that is the starting point, to get this population under control.
Absolutely, and and I have no doubt that that probably was something that formally was set by the agency in terms of seventy-two hours, and and I don't want to speak prior to my time, but I do understand the community as we shift into, this is what we're going, to still have the understanding that was projected, you know, a a time or two ago, we'll say. Um, but we are moving forward to this type of, um, resolution for both sides of the.
Mayor, don't tell me by me. Oh, Ms., thank you, Ms. Bluestone, it's been a while since I've been there.
I know, so excited.
So I've, I'm hearing you changed, uh, a lot, a lot of, uh, ordinances, so my question to you, it used to be that you fed the responsibility of that animal, let's say that animal was you were feeding for seventy-two hours, after three days, that was my call, because I used to work there, for three days, that was, that was, that that animal belonged to you, right? And once you were doing the cite, you were doing citations, or doing the correction, educating, didn't like that performed because they were saying, well, I just, I like the animals, I don't want the animal to go starve to death, right? So, my question to you is, what's gonna happen if that animal, or let's say, you're feeding that animal, or whoever's feeding the animal, and let's say a child passes by and that the animal is aggressive? Because territory, they're dogs, they can be cats, and it's food. They don't get feed all the time, they don't get fed all the time, they're, what happens if it bites? One of the, one of, a a bystander of, you know, a person, regular person, just a person, a kid, what happens to the animal?
Well, uh, again, um, our decisions and how we formulate this is also based on, uh, like I said before, public health and public safety. So that's first and foremost.
Under the ordinance, what happens, what's your regulation or what's the rule? After the animal get.
We have picked up a number primarily stray cats that have, uh, had feeders, that have bitten. Us being a rabies control organization, that is first and foremost our main objective.
If they don't have owners, what happens to them?
They go for the rabies observation at the.
And how long was that?
Ten days.
Ten days? Okay, and at, and for at, for dogs?
It's the same.
Ten days?
That's the, that's the rabies quarantine, now, if it's sick or injured and it bit because of, uh, uh, injury or something like that, um, there is a potential that the animal might be put down, at which time a specimen is submitted. So we still end the rabies observation or quarantine period and get the results of whether or not that animal did have rabies.
So after, after all that and and this, I'm just, I'm just asking a question, um, just being a greater parent, let's say that animal does cut and makes a big, you know, wound to the person or to her child or whatever, who's gonna be taking care of the injuries or the medical bills?
For that individual, if that individual, again, decided to feed the animal, I'm not saying that the responsibility of the animal is on them, but the responsibility of their actions.
So if that animal bites, let's say you're feeding, and it's, I'm just trying to break it down as clear as possible, is, if I'm feeding an animal, and that animal, it bites my neighbor, even though that animal's dog doesn't belong to me, I get the, i- if he bites my my neighbor, I can get sued by my neighbor saying, even though that's not my animal?
You're asking.
For for medical injuries.
You're asking a very black and white question to very gray territory, in terms of, how long has this individual been actually feeding, has it been three days? Are they actually housing the animal, because the other excuse that we do get a lot of the times is, oh, it's a stray, well, that's fine, how long ago did you find it, two months ago?
Well, doesn't, doesn't it contradict yourself, it doesn't contradict itself, because if you're feeding, it means that animals belong to you.
No.
Because that animal, it, the hour, the animal, an animal's an animal. I will follow the time, okay, it's time, they're gonna go feed me, I'll be here. So it belongs.
Well, with community cats, this this city has embraced the the community cats, this council has embraced community cats. So at that time, I'm saying, yes, we do honor the fact that people feed. The responsibility of the animal after it bites is absolutely the city's responsibility, which we take on.
So let's say the animal, if the, if we go through this, the animal bites the person, we're responsible for the injuries of anybody that goes to the hospital?
The animal.
Of the animal, but who's, who's, who's can, who's gonna take care of the of the injuries of the human being?
Again, that would be, if I go to the park.
So are we petition to a lawsuit, that's what I'm trying to ask you.
Well, everything's a potential for a lawsuit.
But and and, you know, allowing this, this ordinance to open it up. Civil matter, does it be, I'm sorry, yes, civil matter.
First, first of all, the ordinance that's on the actual thing has nothing to do with stray feeding. There is an ordinance already on the books for nuisance feeding. This ordinance has nothing to do with that, I'm not changing.
But you were talking about, about nuisance, about feeding right now, that's why I'm asking.
And and I'm not changing anything to that ordinance, I'm I'm not saying it it shouldn't exist, I'm not saying it should exist, I'm not touching that ordinance right now, this is a different ordinance.
Let me stop real quick on that. Zone, if the, if the ordinance we're talking about doesn't have to do with that, is the conversation relevant at this time, or should we bring it back?
I I would object to the argument.
Yeah, I witness, but, uh, it's it's a separate area, I can answer your question, uh, offline.
Mayor Portem, and the reason I'm just bringing it, just bringing it up. No, no, it's just, just to let, just to inform, just to fi- find out, and because right now, they were talking about feeding animals, like, okay, that's.
What's this council member, she brought it up.
This, yeah, this ordinance actually strengthens the oversight of the rabies vaccinations that are given within the community, and that's exactly what we're trying to do.
Talking about feeding, that's why I jumped in in the conversation.
Correct.
Yeah, I, uh, went off track, I I should have redirected, but I allowed it, and now we're off the train, so. Uh, if anybody has any questions about the item on the agenda, you know, we can get to that, if not, we can pass it or turn it down. Councilor Seattle, do you have a item, a question regarding what's on the agenda?
No, no, it it came up because there was a reference to it, and I read the, um, amendment, and there was a reference to this idea of, um, holding people responsible for feeding after a certain number of hours, and that's where it ended up in my conversation, I just wanted some clarity about it.
So the the, that's actually a state law with the three, three days. What we also want to do is understand that, um, the city of Laredo is an empathetic community when it comes to animals, and we want to embrace that. So that's exactly what we're doing in terms of, I'm not just gonna punish somebody for feeding X, Y, Z because of a one-off that somebody might get bit down the line. I know that sounds like I'm not taking into consideration, but I'm trying to take into consideration two representative sides of the city, but I don't want to diminish the empathy that this city shows.
Thank you, Ms. Warren, I'll move to, um, close and introduce this.
Well, I'm just, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually go through, uh, the whole, does anyone here to speak for or against? For or against? For or against?
Motion to close and introduce.
Yeah, and then second. All in favor? Anyone opposed? I'm actually gonna bring back item six and do the whole for or against, because I didn't do that on six, so on item six, is anyone here to speak for or against? For or against? For or against?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Number eight, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, number eight.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor, motion to approve, second reading on number nine and ten.
Motion second, anyone second? All second, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to approve final readings eleven through twenty-one.
Eleven through twenty-one with the exception of sixteen.
We've got a public comment.
We have a, we have a public comment.
Not, on sixteen, we'll pull out sixteen, anybody want to pull any of the other ones out?
Uh, Mayor Portem?
Yes.
Also on number twenty-one, I know it says animal care substation office, but it's gonna be, uh, open to, uh, indoor, uh, possible indoor kennels with noise reduction.
Let's pull that one out, and then we'll make the amendment to it, okay?
Thank you.
Um, let's, so six, so sixteen and twenty-one, we have a motion to approve all the other ones, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Another one? Who's gonna second it? Who's gonna second it? Okay, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Alright, number sixteen. An ordinance repealing and replacing chapter thirty-two vehicles for hire. We have a public comments, can you please state your name?
Uh good evening, uh mayor, or Mayor Protem, uh members of city council management. My name's Ignacio Hassan, I'm here uh speaking on behalf of uh the taxi companies, uh vehicles for hire. Um so I do have a quick presentation, I first wanna, you know, thank management, this has been a two-year effort. Uh this is something that is near and dear to my heart. Um my mom's a taxi driver, as are, you know, the hundred other families. Um so I'm here in part thanks to, to uh, to that line of business, right? Uh we have been working with management for two years, uh to recode it. Uh so again, can't stress enough how, you know, how grateful we are for that. I know Councilman Arhild has been a champion uh for some time now, um and I know Ms. uh Councilman would get us, try to spare us earlier today to get home by dinner, but that didn't happen. So um I, I, just real quick, uh uh chapter thirty-two is getting uh recoded. So we have a, prepared a quick presentation just to try to stay on topic. Uh there's four things, uh we're for it, with an asterisk, right? Uh we, we just wanna, for, for the management to reconsider these, or five items, a- actually, right?
These five?
Yeah, these five items. So section thirty-two dash two, on the operating license requirements. Uh the proposed language reads that there's absolutely no transferring of uh the permit. Uh this is something that I think the intent of management is to allow anyone to apply, right? Uh but uh what city, uh uh what the owners are requesting is for the ability to allow to uh in some way, shape, or form inherit something that they've been owning, or that they've been responsible for, for the past thirty years. So um.
Let me stop you real quick. Zone, is there a reason why we allow that kind of stuff to happen with like other businesses uh? When we're, when, when we've had those like uh la- uh trash uh companies, where we've talked about the D V As and transferring? Is there a reason why we do it there, but we won't do it here? Or is this something, is this a viable uh request?
No, correct, so I, so I think the intent is for allow, so I can, if my mom passed away, I can apply, right? But my mom wants the ability, or they want the ability to say, hey, my, my son, I, I would like for them to have permit forty.
No, but the transfer, the transferring section, is there a way we can accommodate that request legally?
We can, just like with the franchise, you know, that, that's uh more controlling, as, as opposed to, to, you know, passing on uh this type of, of work. It's not so much of a franchise level of, of scrutiny. But, but you can make it the same, you can make one more stringent than the other.
If I may, Mayor? The, the problem was, this was brought up last council meeting, and the problem was that if it's not left to the next of kin. And if it's transferred on to anybody, and that, that's a problem.
Correct, next of kin, and, and it's just someone, and, and it's controlled, right, and at the end of the day, I would still have to, it's just the ability to do it, right? Uh we're, what is it? At the end of the day, I can, I can permit, but if it's left up to judgment, the next time, like permit, let's say, I don't recall a shit, but permit forty-nine is not gonna be under my family like it has been thirty years, right? So they just want the ability to be able to do that.
To just pass it down.
To pass it down, at the end, if I qualify or not, next of kin qualifies or not, that's up to, you know, management to.
Right, you're still need, gonna need to reapply for it regardless, sure, okay.
Other, other requests, yes?
So, Mr. Inajosa, are you speaking on behalf of yourself or a committee?
Uh the committee, so the taxi drivers, uh entirely. So there's ten uh here today, they did form a committee, which hadn't been done in the past. Uh it's sixty drivers, uh and over a hundred, uh forty more drivers, so.
Do you all have a concern with that?
I just didn't catch the beginning of who he was speaking for.
Doctor King, thank you, Mayor. Uh Doctor King, when I, when I first started, once that's one of the, the situations that I ran into and tried to to help him out, everybody was trying to, you know, they brought me in, it's safe, they have a conversation with me. So uh I didn't know Mr. Inajosa was actually Mr. Inajosa's, uh you know, mom. And which later on, they said, you know what, you guys form up, so, cause everybody wanna come in, like, hey, have one person come in. Organize, you know, put everything you have in mind and paper, and let Mr. Inajosa, or choose any of you guys. Uh any of you individuals to represent your, your, your community, right? So they, we had, they chose Mr. Inajosa, so that's why we have Mr. Inajosa.
The lucky.
Did you wanna make a comment?
If I may, I mean, that's the request.
Yeah, that's a request, it's a request, again, I, it's not something that maybe may or not be solved today.
Yeah, I, I understand it, but it, it may be problematic, cause then you get into definition of kin, next, you know, family member versus, you know, just uh passing on the corporate um status, that, that, that's just something that may, may need to be ironed out.
Okay, well, look, just in the interest of time, we have an ordinance before us that we're either going to accept or deny. I think that the motion here would be a conditional acceptance with the condition that we discuss with legal these, these requests. And we bring it back to incorporate whatever changes that can be allowed, to, to accommodate their, their concerns. And at the next council meeting, we can see the updated and with the changes and see what could have been, what could be accommodated and what.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second, any other comments?
Um I, you know, they, here we have this community that's come forward. They waited for us to finish our discussions about other topics in the back. They're here to present what their requests are, and I think Mr. Inajosa has made a very good argument, that these aren't demands. They are requests and hoping for some consideration from legal and our administration to engage in negotiation with them, which I believe is what you're proposing. But they did come with the intention to let not only ourselves, but the public understand what they're doing. There are only five, there are just a few left. I, I would hope that we could give them the respect and listen to all of, of the requests that they have, since they have been here waiting to hear it, and that also gives a chance for the public to hear it as well.
Well, and I appreciate that, but however, your goal is to get your voice heard and then these considerations. And, and you're gonna get that with this motion. Would you like to continue to present the rest?
I perfectly comfortable with however you guys want, uh I have, I can provide this to y'all, I, I.
Well, if you want, just, just finish off.
Just real quick, just real quick, just cause it. Alright, insurance requirements, uh I think uh done great strides on it. Uh there's been, you guys have looked at it. Uh my, my, the only concern that they had was there's no specific requirements, it was up to risk management, so that's very valuable, right? Uh that's, could change tomorrow, could change next week, so that, that obviously impacts their, uh their budget, right? Uh qualifications for a driver's permit, uh there was, I, I believe it was changed from last week for felonies. Uh it used to be a five-year, you couldn't have felony, um and, and you could, you could apply, right? Uh there was no limitation. Uh actually, number, number six under thirty-two dash eleven says not have been convicted of an offense. And then it states a, a slew of offenses regardless of the date of conviction. Uh so in the past, it had three to five years, now I understand, and then it, it has a clause up for interpretation of depending on who's approving, may or may not. So again, just putting specific times of like a misdemeanor, let's say I got a D W I when I was eighteen, the person when I apply at twenty-eight may or may not say, hey, you, you can't do it, you haven't done enough time or whatever case may be. So I appreciate if that section was kept along the lines of where it's at right now, again, up for your legal's consideration. Uh fair setting, uh we understand that you guys want free market, uh and that there, there's no stake in the city saying how much you may or may not charge. But during the, and I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but the current immigration uh policies, that's their only line of defense. Uh to say that they're not, may or may not be transporting people, cause that's what they fall back on, right? So if you're charging sixteen dollars to go from A to B, they happen to have not papers, that's the only way that they can say, hey, I'm just providing a service. So I appreciate if that is kept intact while you guys figure out what the stake is. Um the number of authorized taxi cabs, uh there's no limitation. Uh it used to be formula-based, we're in a different world, now there's Ubers, Lifts, taxis. Um I understand, at the end of the day, who wants to be a taxi cab, is gonna be a taxi cab uh permit holder. Uh but if someone comes for the, whatever reason, buys, you know, applies for fifty permits, gets them, it's gonna destabilize the market. The only person that's gonna be affected is a small business owner, right? So it's a hundred of them, so again, just, it's in there right now, it's being taken off. Um and uh when in Rome, one request, um so downtown taxistan, we work with uh engineering and management. Uh they were temporarily relocated from Saragossa to Santa Agustín Plaza. Uh we worked with management to, to move over. Um now there's only space for four at Saragossa and seven at Santa Agustín, and they're split up. It'd be awesome if we can go back, or if they can go back uh to Santa Agustín Plaza where they were at, um mainly in, in this area right here that, that you see in front of them. Um I understand there's uh parking meters there. And that the city sees it as a potential for revenue, uh but in this, uh there's a revenue analysis, like, you know, meter will assuming that it's used all day for three hundred and thirteen days a year, it's thirty-seven thousand. We can explore uh options as, you know, them paying a dollar a day to create the same amount of revenue that you're gonna create. Or do a downtown surcharge, fifty cents a dollar for not only taxis, Ubers and Lifts, and then you can possibly reinvest that in downtown. So again, that's no different than what you do in uh, in other places at airports or anything, so again, just an avenue that you guys can explore. And, and if we can get, you know, that, that place that have worked for, you know, for close to a year, two hours, that it was always being expanded. And again, it, you know, the numbers, there's about two to three hundred trips just for taxis, Ubers and Lifts probably do another hundred, and there's another hundred of illegal rideshare services, so there's some revenue there to be explored. Um and then, last thing, innovation, if you guys wanna do joint advertisement surveys with, for city initiatives, they're a great avenue. There's a bunch of people that use taxis, uh that's the reason why they're still, they're here. Uh advocating for it. Um I would argue that we could also be partners in microtransit. Um so that, you know, in, in the city of Boston, microtransit got with Uber, Lyft, and taxis. Um as a way so that they don't invest in the fleet and the F T Es to do this. And they would uh be able to jump on the app and pick up the people as they go, and that, that ultimately takes cooperation, so. Um that just, just for y'all's consideration.
Mr. Inajosa, did you have that conversation with anyone on staff about that idea?
I sent it to the, the people in charge of the, the.
Well, I actually, I remember Protem, if I may, I really liked that microtransit and started off like a pilot program, but then. Yeah, I'll try to see if we can.
I did send it to the Goodman Corporation and, and then the defense, I think I came a little bit too late, uh but but, but uh the Goodman Corporation was. Uh the Goodman Corporation was wo- working the feasibility study for the microtransit at that point with uh El Metro. Uh but again, it was probably beyond the public comment, so, but there's an example, uh Boston Metro is using it, so. Um and then last thing, special events. Uh taxi right now rel- uh relies heavily on being at a certain location. In Vegas, you know, you get outside a hotel, you're there. Uh in Disney, you're outside, so if we can partner out also, again, for your consideration for special events, where they can be there. Uh it also helps with congestion, traffic management issues, but again, when, that was just bonus, I appreciate.
I, I think we should have you, the management, if you can talk with him on these ideas, cause this kind of addresses a lot of concerns, plus we wanna make sure that the public isn't, is riding with reputable drivers when, you know, cause you never know these days, and you wanna make sure that the person that's giving you a ride is licensed and, and protect that the integrity of that, of that profession and that industry, so uh definitely think that we should, I mean, there's a motion on the floor for the five items, but I think I would like to modify it to include the, the microtransit and, and the designated pickup spots at the arena and stuff, so we can have management talk to, to you about these ideas and, and bring it back to us to see how we can incorporate some of these ideas and then bring back the change to that ordinance.
Do we to, do we need to amend that motion?
Oh, I'm amending my motion to accommodate all that.
I'll second that, again.
So there's a motion and a second, did, did you get to, to say everything?
Yeah, that's it, I was gonna say, they created a committee, so moving forward, I think you'll be dealing with them, I'm, I'm out. Well, I'll be there in the background, but, but, but I appreciate it, it really means a lot, and, and they, means a lot to them, and that's, you know.
Well, you did a great job, and you prepared a very well presentation, and, and I'm very impressed, and kudos to you for, for representing that. Okay, so there's a motion and a second, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor, motion to extend the meeting to eleven P M.
Motion second, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Enjoy the rest of your, of your evening, we'll be here till eleven.
Mayor, motion to approve the consent.
Hold on, we're on item twenty-one. Councilman Gonzalez, you have something on that one?
Twenty-one, uh just to, just to add there, for the record, that it's uh Animal Care Substation Office, but it's gonna be open to uh indoor and, uh indoor animal kennels and with noise reduction as well, that's in the plan.
So you wanna modify the item?
Yeah, modify.
Okay, motion to um like modify it as, as stated?
Yes, please.
And I'll second that.
Thank you.
Um so we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Motion to approve the consent agenda from twenty-two through forty-eight, tabling number twenty-six. And I need to add some verbiage to number thirty-four and thirty-five.
So table twenty-six, thirty-four, thirty-five, we're taking out, any others that you all wanna take out? There were a motion and a second, I'll second that, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Table twenty-six, motion to table twenty-six?
Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Item thirty-four?
Airport number thirty-four, authorizing the city manager to approve a contract with Rapid Seven to free in data solutions to provide cybersecurity software solutions for the total amount of a hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and sixty. Pricing under, this is a correction, D I R C P O fifty-six eighty-seven. Funding is available in the Information Services and Telecommunications Cybersecurity Division.
Motion to approve as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
And on number thirty-five, Mayor Protem, mayor, motion to rescind purchase with Brink drones in consideration to authorize a purchase contract with Axon Enterprises in Scottsdale, Arizona for a five-year term contract in the total amount of three million, four hundred and forty-six thousand, thirty-one dollars and seven cents for the purchase of drones. Using buyback, buyboard contract number seven one eight dash twenty-three. Brink has been slow to roll out, all the drone stations initially ordered, therefore the purchase contract will be canceled. Need, need to be canceled, funding is available in the auto theft task force fund.
That's the motion?
That's the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Oh, you have a co- a comment? On that item? Okay, um. Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Can we bring back item number twenty-six?
Item twenty-six was tabled.
Tabled, right, that's what I'm asking, can we bring it back?
Well, it was already tabled.
Well, it's tabled, you can take it off the table, you move, take it off the table, and then.
Can we move to take it off, just find out the reason and then take away the rest?
Motion to bring it back from the tabling, number twenty-six.
Motion second, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes, item twenty-six.
My, my own question, Mr. Sanz, is that it is for um the existing health department and, and has to do with building improvements. I'm just wondering why we're tabling it.
Uh, good evening, uh Lady Debatantes, for the record, so the reason we're tabling is we had a, an oversight from the department. Uh this is not to be an amendment, this to be an award of contract, so just to avoid having all confusion.
Perfect.
We're just gonna table it, bring it back on the next meeting as an award for, for contract.
I appreciate that very much, thank you.
Okay, motion to table second, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Alright, we are on.
Fifty-four.
My item fifty-six?
Yeah, fifty-six.
We've already done that, okay. Uh discussion with possible action to amend the city code of ordinance to modify the current five-year residency requirement for appointment to city boards, commissions, and committees. Reducing it to a two-year residency requirement and any other matters incident there too. Um just in reading um the, the code of ordinances and looking at boards and commissions. I came across this five-year residency requirement, and it just seems very onerous and off-putting to people who move into our community. Who um enjoy living here in the city, I think you can get that in one year, two years, I know it's kind of arbitrary. But five years does seem to be very six, uh very excessive. And if, uh especially for people who are coming into the city, uh many times they come in with ideas, they come in from different places. They have different experiences to share, and if they're uh interested in serving on a board, a committee, a commission. I don't think an owner's residency requirement should prevent them from doing so, and that. And that was my intent in bringing this item forward. Um, if there is some discussion about modifying the two years, uh, please, uh, I'd like to hear from someone. I've looked into other cities. Other cities have a much lower uh, residency requirement in order to participate in civic government.
Mr. Nev, do you have a reason to suggest why that was suggested or?
No, with within the, within the, within the procedure manual and and such is where the five year has, it's been set for a while. Uh, so I I think uh, making that uh, go across because the five year relates to the charter-based boards and commissions. And uh, so having a cross-the-board, one number fits all would make it make a lot of sense within the structure. So I I I don't think anybody here has an issue with the two-year.
No, it's just if it's in the charter, then this would not affect the charter, obviously. Charter supersedes it.
But but there are no residency, there's no residency requirements in the charter. That's what we do with our procedure manual. So establishing this through the ordinance would be a good, it would be a good thing.
Okay, if there's no objection, I'd like to move to recommend reducing that five-year residency requirement to a two-year residency requirement. For with all the language included over that. Thank you.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor, my item's next, number fifty eight?
Yes.
Discussion with possible action regarding the T A M U tennis courts focusing on the discrepancies between what was originally designed and proposed versus what was ultimately delivered to the city of Laredo and Texas A and International University, T A M U. The courts currently do not meet the required standard for collegiate or professional lead level play and any other matters incident there too. So I received several calls um, from the Texas so, uh, Texas Tennis Association regarding these tennis courts that were turned into the city of Laredo a couple, several months ago. And um, according to what they're telling me, they're not meeting the standard um, for collegiate play or even professional play. Um, so I'd just like to ask staff to set up a meeting with the architect, staff, T A M U, if they want to be there, myself, of course. And um, the ultimate person that that built this complex to see where the ball was dropped, what happened, if they actually are to spec or they're not to spec. And if we could have this pleased within the next two weeks before the next meeting.
I'll second that for discussion.
Motion and a second?
May I?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chavez, I know that this has already come up and that you were going to investigate it. What happened?
Yeah, I I I don't, I'm I'm online with her is that it's been on the agenda for a while. Can we get a report now on what would happen?
So basically, uh, mayor, if I may, Mayor Protemp, uh, but basically we have a a difference on the measurement uh, from what is the baseline to the location of the fence on the back end. To the fence, to the fence. Okay, and to the side. Okay, so on the back of, from the baseline and to the side. Uh, and there's a difference of less than a foot, okay, from where the fence is located and the measurements uh, that were on the plans. So currently, I'm in, I'm in discussions with the U S Tennis Association as of last week. I'm just trying to verify all the information so that I can have all that accuracy so that we can sit down and discuss it with the contractor and and the architect. I'm going through those, through those uh, checks.
And what we originally heard was that it was the actual court itself that did not meet those measurements. You're telling us that the courts meet the professional level play measurements that were contracted out. And it's only the fence line where the discrepancy for professional level play surfaces.
Okay, so uh, let me just clarify it, okay? So the dimensions of the court itself, uh, let's say where the outer bounds, where the wall goes in, where the line is, those are correct, okay? There's a per- uh, there's a perimeter buffer around the courts. So that buffer has to be a certain distance
Right.
from uh, from the fence on the back of the court and on the side. Those measurements are the ones that are less than a foot short.
Okay.
Okay, and those measurements are required in order for players to to go back and and to the side, right? Uh, to have that ability to play. So those are the measurements that we're currently discussing with with U S T A. We're we're gonna get clarification whether those meet uh, the current collegiate standards. And that's the information that we're working on before we make that decision. Okay, let's relocate this.
Okay, so you are double checking
Yes.
the distance to make sure that it falls with what we contracted with for professional level play. Those dimensions need to be correct. And then the other information that the courts themselves were not correctly dimensioned. That has been proven that those courts are the size they need to be for the professional level play that we contracted for.
Well, no, it's cuz the the perimeter around it, that buffer is part of the court.
Okay, okay. That's that's the confusion. The green space
Mm-hmm, yes.
is is correct.
Mm-hmm.
And then the outer perimeter is what needs to be corrected.
Yes. So call it the buffer. So the buffer zone, that's the one in question right now. The buffers.
Okay.
Just just an amendment to to request, of course, to come up with a remedy for the situation, of course, right? How is it gonna be repaired? How much time is it gonna take? And who's gonna be responsible for it ultimately? So just be sure, I I just add that amendment to it, please.
Yeah, was this like a, was was this a design flaw or was this a construction flaw or where where was, where was the discrepancy in the measurement?
So that's where we're investigating at this point. So right now, we're we're in communicate, we just wanna, we're in communication with U S T A because they assisted us in the design. So we just want to make sure with them before we go out and say, okay, now this, this this, this is where the mistake was. This is what needs to be correct.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Item fifty nine, councilman King?
Yes, that is, surprised we're able to get today.
I mean, we could have driven and do it next time.
Uh, fifty nine, um, actually, so this is basically um, a discussion about an exciting possibility. I figured we'd wait till the next meeting, but uh, I'll, I think it's, we have enough time, I think, to just hit on it. And and it's just to make people aware. There's something called a project finance zone that only a few cities in Texas have access to. Uh, Dallas, Houston, San Antonio, Fort Worth. Um, and this is a unique way um, to be able to keep more hotel motel dollars in um, in the city of Laredo instead of going back to Austin to the state. This is something that has to get passed by the state legislature. Um, and Corpus Christi recently got um, a you know, originally it's intended for the larger cities, but Corpus Christi, a town, a state that's not much different in size than us, it's slightly larger, but uh, and they got an exemption through the state legislature um, in twenty twenty-three, I believe. And essentially it allows you to designate a three-mile zone centered around a convention center or arena in which growth in state hotel taxes collected within the zone would be rebated to the city for a thirty-year period to pay for improvements to a convention center or arena. And um, I've uh, already reached out to Senator Zaffarini's office, State Representative Richard Raymond's office. And they're working with their legislative staff to look for possible ways to get this language included to where later Laredo would qualify. Um, potentially in the twenty twenty-seven session. This could take more than one session. It's it's kind of difficult to get this designation, but if we could get it, uh, it would be a way to um, have extra funding that instead of going back to the state, would be here for either convention center or arena. Now, the question is, we don't have a convention center at this time, but we do have the same daughter arena. So for sure, the same daughter arena would qualify. Um, but could a future planned convention center qualify if we got this designation? So their legislative staffs are having to work through our possibilities um, of and how they would write the language to make Laredo potentially qualify. So the the motion is just to uh, move forward with working with uh, our state senator and state representative to find um, re- uh, legislative language that could get Laredo to qualify and passing a a resolution, um, you know, that that the city supports this potential P of Z designation and and however we see that it could get to be qualified.
That's your motion?
Yes.
Motion and a second, any conversation?
Um, I do. Uh, I'm wondering, uh, and I know you, you briefly touched on the fact that we don't have a convention center. I know that management right now is working on um, some plans to see about the location for a future convention center and and will bring back uh, possible, possibilities for us to consider and as we try to find the best space for for a convention center. Um, do we need to wait for that to be, for it to be more um, a fuller plan before we move forward or are we able to do this at this point now?
Well, this is for legislation, right? So the legislation would, we would either support the legislation regardless and.
I believe, not Mayor Protemp, I believe we have time for both of these in in sequence together. Uh, just because uh, we have two years before the next legislative cycle, so that'll give us time in order to work through all those different pieces. This is not a bad program. Consider it like a tiers, the T I R Z laid over the convention center space area.
But it's better, it's better than T I R Z because we're not taking it away from ourselves, we're taking it away from the state.
Correct, yeah, correct. That, and that's why the state has to approve it.
And I can, I completely agree. I just um, if or do we, do we pass the resolution now that we don't have, it's nebulous, our plans, do we lose something if we don't have more formulated plans? That was my question.
What I would like is that uh, just give us the opportunity to put together the resolution and bring it back to you for approval.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor, motion to bring number five on the supplemental and number sixty-two as well.
So let's do sixty-two first and then five. Uh, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Um, item sixty-two, I believe we might have some recusals. It's about clear choice.
Yes, I'll be, I'll be recusing.
Can they stay here for the conversation? Okay. Uh, discussion with possible action to adopt a resolution of the city council expressing support for clear choice emergency rooms proposed expansion into clear choice hospitals. There's already a resolution to support their um, initiative. It's a private initiative. There's no taxpayer monies going towards it. It's just a a letter of support. So that's my motion. We have a second. Um, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And then there's two recusals.
Yes.
Okay, mo- motion, motion passes. Is it a recusal or extension?
Recusal.
Okay, two recusals. All right, and then item?
Item number five, discussion with possible action on hosting the fifth annual Family Night Under the Stars, an overnight camping event on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-five at Hobbita Dada Park as authorized under section twenty-one dash two seven two eight, two and three of the city code and any other ma- any matters incident there too. Co-sponsored by Mayor Protemp, Vanessa Perez and Councilmember David Tiger King.
So you have a motion?
That's my motion.
Second. Well, congratulations on doing this event. I know a lot of people look forward to it, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It should be.
Does anybody have any comments?
No, sir.
Okay, we have a motion.
I have a, I have a question. What, the section twenty-one, twenty-seven, eight, two, three, what is that?
He has to get authorization for the overnight.
For the overnight because the parks typically close at eleven, twelve o'clock.
Oh, okay.
So I need the authorization from you all every year to allow us to be there all night.
That was one of my questions, like, why are you bringing it to the council?
That's the only reason why. I need to do it, exactly.
Yes, approval.
But thank you for the support, guys. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. We have a request to bring back item sixteen.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Um, we include the businesses around the San Agustin Plaza when talking about the the well, the parking and and the the taxis that were lined up around there. I know there's, there had already been some conversations. But La Posada ha- has invested in a traffic study and I just want to make sure that we're including them in the conversation and in coordination with with any.
Yeah, and I'm aware of that. The conversation with La Posada. So as we work with the vehicles for hire, there will be some things that we'll come back with a recommendation that we're not gonna be able to help participate with. But there will be some others that we can.
Okay. We're on item sixteen one?
I'm sorry, that's a second.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wagner, I think you're here, right? Yes, thank you so much. I know it's late. Um, so this is just a request for a status and timeline. I know you're very new to the job and um, this is something that's been going on for several years. It's a environmental solid waste ware project, uh, ware dam project in North Central Park. The construction's been there just for years and no one knows. I can never get an answer about um, what what the status of the project is, when's it gonna be done, what's taking so long, you know? Uh, I know it's not your fault. You just started. I'm just curious if you are aware of it and um, anything you've learned since you've been on the job?
I am, Dr. King. I I am aware of it. I have been there. I've seen it. Uh, I've touched it. Uh, it it is, it does exist and I believe it should be uh, ready around completion in about six weeks' time.
Sixty days.
Sixty days, sixty days, so.
The entirety of the project?
It should be. It's it's pretty close. They're doing the wrap-up on it now. I don't know how long it'll take for the water to recharge behind the project. So it's flowing, but uh, as far as the structure and the integrity, it should be there.
Okay, cuz, yeah, when I first came in, it was described as multiple phases, I guess, and um, there'd be lights and there'd be, it would be kind of this um, yeah, you, yeah.
Mr. Santos for the record, so the the phase that he was for, we're referring to is the one seat, so it's only the the water feature. The the other phrase, the other uh, mini you're referring to are are gonna be different phases. So this, the phase is just a water feature. Though, and that phase we're anticipating to be completed within sixty days, uh, sixty uh, days, uh, while permitting. If we get any rains or any
Right.
type of rain might affect the workability of the contractor.
So can residents continue, like after that, will they just continue to see construction and fencing and?
Yes, the fencing has been there for the entire
Right.
construction just to avoid anyone going in, in and out. Uh, so.
So when can we expect that to go away?
Once a contractor finishes, we estimate about sixty days to for him to complete the work.
And then the other phases that come later?
Well, that that'll be a discussion that we'll have with the em- environmental department to to how to move forward with the next phases of the project.
Is there fund, do we know if there's funding already available for those next phases or?
I would have to che- check with them.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, yes, uh, my only question, is this where the Beavers are making their dams or is this a separate?
It's a separate, it's a separate, another area.
Yeah, it's uh, more based on that. It's kind of in the north central park that um, less people go attend, so it's not, it's not as seen as much for the regular north central park goer, but for the people that live right there. No, no, that was, that's a, that's a, I was waiting for that one, which, yes, Mr. Councilmember.
We are in negotiations with the Beavers, but they they are not budging so far.
Yeah, a lot of jokes tonight. All right, let's go. Carry on, carry on.
All right, I do have an item, um, sixty-three, discussion with possible action on creating a plan to alleviate the public safety congestion concerns related to parking in front of Muller Elementary and any other matters incident there too. So we do, we do have a a piece of property now that we've acquired across the street from the elementary school and we do have a congestion issue there um, with with traffic and and the drop-off and the pickup times. And we're still trying to figure out a site plan on on the property and what's gonna happen with it. But in the meantime, it's it's an empty lot. It's not being utilized and um, I'd like to pursue the idea of maybe getting millings put in. Uh, you know, I've talked to uh, uh, John Orfila about it. He says that millings, they they can use them. They use them all the time. Uh, maybe put down some millings so we can kind of utilize that property a little bit for now until we can get a site plan going to figure out uh, what to do with it and uh, what direction the council wants to go with it. Um, and so whatever cost would would come out of District Seven uh, priority fund. So just wanted to get support from the council to be able to move forward with that, with that issue on on that property.
I have, I have a question. Um, so I I I think my concern was that this was a six-million-dollar purchase and we are trying to determine if there's some way to recoup those costs. And so if we invest money in this property, is is that going to compromise our ability to really begin to look at how we can alleviate some of the costs of that land purchase?
Well, I'm I'm I'm.
That's a question, I'm sorry, it's a question for administration.
Well, they're looking for our direction. So I think. Well, they're looking for our direction, so I think we haven't had a conversation about.
Well, it's temporary, and then you still can pivot to other plans and projects.
And do we have some type of timeline as to when some ideas are gonna be floated to council about what that land can be used for and how we're gonna go about either what kind of use it'll be or recouping some of the costs for it? It was part of that settlement, and it was an expensive piece of land. So if we're gonna look at some options to alleviate some of that, which is what we had discussed, but, I mean, general, right, before, just when those plans would come back to council?
Well, I mean, normally, the district council member works with the community to figure out how to address the issues in the community. So I would be working with stakeholders and residents to see what it is that they would like to have happen with this piece of property, the schools, the students, the people that live out there. And then I'm talking with staff to see what it is, how this can accommodate some of the needs that we have in the city. So I would take the lead on it as the council member of the district to move this, see what direction is best, and present that to council and hope that you all would support it. But I think the people that live out there are the ones that would best know what to do with that property. So I would like to get the support from council as the council member for the district to be the one to lead those conversations with the people out there. As we've always done on council, we all take care of our own districts. So as long as we continue to take care of our own districts, we can all collectively take care of the city. So that's kind of what I always thought the vision was for our districts.
I, I do believe this particular piece of property is a little bit different in that designation simply because the monies that funded its purchase came from the Capital Improvement Fund, and that is a citywide fund. And while I do appreciate, you know, the need to make sure it conforms with what goes on in the district, I don't think we should cut ourselves off from trying to replenish some of those monies because of the tremendous expense in acquiring that piece of property, which was not a planned acquisition. It came about because of legal actions. So I don't pretend to want to cut off any district contribution as to looking for the future planning of that land, but I do think we should keep ourselves open to other plans and other uses of that land because of the funding source for that property.
Well, I just wanna clarify that all funding comes from the city funding. All the monies come from the same pool. We designate them separately, so it's really all the same. I mean, we're talking about city funds. We're talking about city property, and we're talking about property that's located in certain districts. So, you know, at this point, the request on the table is to allow for this school area that gets very heavily congested. There's no parking. Anybody who's driven out into Mines Road in this particular area would know about the problems there are. And we have a piece of land now that we can utilize to allow the public to use it as, to relieve issues. You know, if the idea is to recoup monies, I don't, I'm not a hundred percent convinced that that's the goal of the council. I thought the goal was to alleviate issues. And we had many parents and students come to us here at council, tell us that they wanted that school, those Muller kids wanna be warehouse-free. They were wearing shirts. They were saying that. They wanted us to help address the issue, and we took care of it. So we can, we can talk about that in depth later on, but for right now, there is a need for alleviation on that area. People are parking on the curb. They're parking on the sidewalk. And if council wants to approve and allow that, then fine. And if not, then we just continue to allow the congestion to exist.
I have another question on a second. Is, do we know if United Independent School District has been brought into this conversation? Seeing as the school is a responsibility of UISD, has there been any outreach to see if there are opportunities to either help fund the cost of the millings or participate in some other way because it does impact UISD land?
I can answer that. Last time, we reached out to the board trustee, Molina, and their response was, they sent a letter back to us to figure out, basically said that they want us to figure out the issue. And so, you know, considering the fact that she's, you know, not the easiest elected official to partner with, it's not been, it's not, it's not necessary to partner with the school district, especially when they have a history of kicking the problem back to us. So again, we can talk to them, but last time we spoke to them, they were interested in buying property next door and not dealing at all with this property across the street. So, I mean, we can keep going, but
I, well, I do appreciate that, but it does seem odd to single out one member when I think we should be approaching the entire school district board. And UISD operates as a board, and so instead of disparaging one member, I would like to see us reach out to the entire board.
Well, I appreciate your concern with District Seven, Councilmembers, see y'all. However, there are big issues in District Three, especially like Mercy Hospital, that, you know, maybe if you could focus on your district, it would probably be helpful. Councilman King?
Yeah, I just have a question. Is kind of moving forward with your item today, you know, are we pre-destining, you know, kind of what it would turn? Because, you know, I'm totally open to it, and I respect that it's your, I'm mainly asking if there's thoughts of, I don't, you know the area better, obviously, like, downzoning it and selling it to a developer who might wanna create like a plaza or something with restaurants? I know congestion's already an issue, but is that something even like realistic, you think, for that?
Well, we, yes, Councilman King, we've gone down that route in the past, and there's a lot of what-ifs here. But again, you know, putting millings down on a undeveloped piece of land is a good use for this property at the time. And if later on, we wanna have a different conversation, we wanna move, remove it or move it or change it, that's fine. But we're talking about millings. That's all it is right now. There's a motion, a second. Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. I, I don't know, we're on supplemental, supplemental number, number four. We're left with four and six.
Yes, I don't see any rain in the forecast, so I
I love that. There you go.
So I can table for next meeting, so
Four and six. We'll table four and six.
Oh, you want to table, you want to table, oh, I thought because you wanted to hear six.
No, I'll table mine, unless you wanna hear yours right now.
Well, no, we got, it's gonna take a little longer.
It's gonna take a little longer than that.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, because I wanted to defer to six, that's why.
Councilmember Goncalves, we are trying to put together a meeting about flooding in the south because the issues that I've had in similar, kind of on the edge of our district, so we're happy to include you in that and as a starting point. Yes, absolutely.
I didn't know you were a geologist.
That was very sweet of you. That was very sweet of you. I like that.
No, I'm
Right?
Talk about it later. Let's just table both. Okay, motion, table the last two items. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, second. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned.